Can they put a great year in our name?
You ready?
All right, six o'clock we'll get started. Say the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll bring up tomorrow.
All right, got it over here, but John is still recouping. We hope to have him here in July, so keep out, keep an eye on him. All right, on the agenda, did we have any changes Brent that we needed to do here?
We have two. The two are the addition of fireworks permit, request for fireworks permit, sale of fireworks. And then the other one is for petition for Brink's addition. They've asking that one end of Brink's be barricaded off to help with the traffic issues that are going on.
You're gonna add that to your, I would call it twenty-six?
No, those will be separate items. I'd recommend you just probably knock them out, maybe in between eight and nine.
Okay, I've gotta see where do we draw on those.
Or the Brink's one, I would suggest there, and then if you want to do both of them, there we can, or.
Okay, so let's do the Brink's one first and we'll do the fireworks one. Yes, I'm doing both between eight and nine?
Yep.
Okay.
Do that right there.
All right, any other?
Nope.
Changes, okay.
Want us to approve this agenda with set changes?
Okay, Brian makes a motion in a second.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, and now it's approved. Consent agenda. Anybody have any questions on that? I just gotta pull them up here. Yeah, okay.
Does Josephically say consent agenda?
Okay, anybody's got any questions on whether or not to motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
Some of them.
Okay, Chelsea gets a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, she does a second. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, city minutes from the last time we met. Anybody got any questions on that? Concerns, anything?
No.
Step.
And no.
Have a little second. Want us to approve the agenda?
The minutes, you mean?
Or the minutes, yes, sorry.
Okay, Brian makes a motion in a second.
Second.
Second. Okay, on my favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, approval of special city council minute meeting here that we had.
Uh...oh, here it is.
Yeah. Think everything will go up there as well, so. Okay, I entertain a motion to accept a special meeting.
So moved.
Kate makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll get up to the public comments section. Anybody got anything you want to say this evening? Everybody? Okay. Move along. Okay, sheriff's report. The one who drew the short straw tonight.
All right.
Always stay political.
There you go.
I'll just run through the numbers first. Total calls for service, one hundred and sixty-two. The most important numbers you'll see on there are citations and warnings with the increased traffic through areas where it's not usually increased and people not seeing stop signs they don't usually see. A lot more warnings. Usually we have around ten to fifteen warnings. You see this month we had thirty-five. A lot of us, me and Lindsay, spend a lot of time down here, but that's also a lot of other deputies came down here when they're off and we put a lot of hours in. I'd like to compile like a number of hours report for this month. I might do that for next month and see what the difference is, but.
I'd like to see that too.
Yeah.
Just because I know you guys have been, you and your department have been around here a lot more.
Yeah, some people like it and some don't.
Of course.
That's fine.
Expect that.
I'll just read the paragraph. This month we experienced one hundred and sixty-two calls for service. This number includes eight calls related to traffic complaints as well as twenty-two calls where deputies attempting warrants for civil papers. There were fourteen calls in reference to suspicious activity. Two of those calls were similar in nature where an individual calling to, claiming to be from North Dakota one or Horace one called two different households and asked whether or not they'd be home the next day. Nothing further came of it. They came from Russian phone numbers.
Wow, nice.
It happens every, you hear about it in Fargo more. I don't think I've heard about it in Horace too much, but one day they're North Dakota one, one day they're Horace one. They can't make up their mind what scam they're running, so nothing came of it. Everyone was fine, so.
All right.
Yeah.
So have you noticed some of the warnings and citation had dropped recently after the initial push?
Yeah, so we, we keep a log on Microsoft OneNote where people, we log traffic complaints. Like I logged Sunnyside Street and Brink Drive is a big one. I logged that in May and then we've been hitting that hard. I've been there every shift at work since then for at least an hour a day. And you can tell like the site numbers go from, I ran for an hour, I gave four sites or gave three warnings in a site. Now you look at it, the last five or six where no violations observed, people know we're around. Of course, that lends itself to people speeding in other places, so we've received a few traffic complaints from other parts of town that aren't seeing as much now that we're focusing on one spot, but we're doing our best to kind of spread it around and we urge people, if they see a bunch of speeders or anything, give us a call. We'll hit it hard.
Yeah, I have no, I mean, a couple, or the, my daily trek back and forth out on the eighty-one out there.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like the traffic has slowed down some compared to what it was originally. I mean, there's a lot of people.
Yeah.
Going too quickly. And there was some passing that was going on, but I'm not, I'm not hearing from anybody saying they've seen that anywhere either. And I think it's slowed down, so, which is good.
Yeah, I don't think I'm gonna stop on the detour route in three weeks.
Yeah.
It's been pretty good.
Okay. I have a meeting to attend, so I need to run.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks for coming on, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
We'll move on to Brink Drive. Let's talk about that one. Brent, you wanna bring that up or?
I'll, I'll lead it off, and I know you've been working with some folks in that area. But we have received a petition or request to have a portion, or one end of Brink's drive. And I believe it was their suggestion, or the suggestion is to have the south end blocked off or barricaded off so traffic can't go to and through it and make it temporary, temporarily make it a dead end road to cut down on the traffic, people cutting through. There was, that was signed by two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen different households.
How many, how many?
That would be a good portion of the Brink's addition. That'd be most of them. We did, we did receive a inquiry on the city's website from, like, contact us. Not in favor of barricading it. Their feelings were that traffic has cut down with the increased enforcement from Cass County. Maintenance of the road has been fair to good. I would say there have been highs and lows for the maintenance of it. We've been trying to stay up on the dust control and getting the contractor to get out there to keep the washboard. Last week, I, I believe it was last week and the week before, there was a period of time where the washboard in that road was very, very bad. But we've been trying to work with the contractor to keep that maintained better along with the detour route. But the main concern I saw within this petition was really just about, it was mainly about the speed of the traffic, safety concern there, and then cutting down the number of vehicles, because they were seeing a very big increase in the number of vehicles cutting through their neighborhood. So they're asking for the city's help. They're requesting it was petitioned, so.
Yeah, and that's Steve better got a hold of me too. We talked about this a little bit. This is what I asked him to do, is to go and get a petition for the group there to try and see, you know, if that's what they want. Because they don't wanna, they don't wanna go do something when they got most of the residents, what, two or three, they don't wanna do this thing, so. But no, we got, we got a pretty good number of people to sign on for this thing.
I guess my only question would be is, is there any issue with emergency vehicles that you have to use that route?
Brent, you wanna just go ahead and?
Walk up there or just walk from here?
Please, come on up here.
Okay, my, my name's Brent Hanson. I'm on the fire department. I'm probably the most active first responder during the day because I, I'm disabled, so I don't have a full-time job. That route that go, we go down Brink right there, there's actually three fire department people on that route. Kara Leopold, Greg Leopold, and myself. Greg and Kara live on sixty-fourth avenue. I live on Sunnyside Street. So literally if we have to go around to eighty-first and then come all the way back around, it's gonna add more than eight minutes to a call. And everybody knows that, you know, seconds save lives. So I guess my question to you guys is, is it gonna be open to first responders, fire department, rescue department to where we can get through, or how, how would you like us to get to the fire hall during the day if that is barricaded off?
The, the request mine are saying is they wanted to have it completely barricaded.
Right, that's what they want.
And it would impact.
As well, so that's why I was just wondering, you know, and I mentioned to Adam about this.
Right.
He mentioned they could, you know, if we set this up right, they could move the barricades to get something through. I know that's an impediment.
Right.
But it'd be better than having to drive all the way around.
No.
Would that be something if you guys would at least?
I would have no problem with that, as long as it's okay that we move it and then continue to the fire hall, do the call, come back and close it back off again, because like I said, you know, seconds save lives.
Agreed. And I have no problem with that. I mean, that's what I was thinking, you and I were talking about.
Yep.
Because that's what my thought was on this too. If you guys move it, you do what you gotta do, and you're done.
Right. Does anybody else on the board have an issue with us moving it temporarily, putting it back when we're done with the call?
What about if we had the barricade on the other end instead of putting it on the county seventeen end and put it on the?
Seventy-six?
Seven, six end.
Seventy, seventy-six is where we actually come through from.
Yeah, they had to come through there.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to come through there no matter what, otherwise we have to go all the way around eighty-one.
He's on the north side of seven.
Oh, he's on the north side, okay.
Yep, Greg, Greg and Kara on sixty-fourth avenue, they would cut through Sunnyside Street, and I'm literally on the south side of Sunnyside Street, so.
So that's what we're thinking, like for on Brink's drive, the barricade would be up by seventeen.
Yeah, as long as you guys closed it off and then give us permission, you know, for emergency runs where we can move it, go to the call when we're done with the call, come back, because if, if I have to drive through there, close it, take off to the fire hall when Greg and Kara go through there, they gotta open it up, close it, get to the fire hall, then we gotta come back, open it back up, and then close it before we go to the call.
What my hope is, is that people will just quit going there.
Oh, agree.
By doing this, so if you guys open it for your runs and come back again.
Correct.
It's a non-issue at this point.
Right.
What I'm hoping will happen.
Right.
That way we can preserve the road, you guys can, you know, just kind of keep things as they're supposed to be and get people to drive on the detour as much as I know it's a little bit longer, but still. But if you guys are okay with that.
I'm okay with it. The biggest thing would be to talk to the homeowners, so they know when certain vehicles are going through there that we're not breaking the law, we're not doing whatever, because you're gonna get somebody calling us in and different things like that, or hassling us for going through there, so. But as long, maybe send out a notice to them or whatever that, you know, the south end is, is gonna be access for first responders or whatever, so.
Well, same thing up on Sunnyside Street too.
Correct.
We would put the barricade, I mean, you want it on seventy-six, or would you guys like it up on seventeen?
Well, and that's, I, you know.
That's something, that's why I, when I talk with you about that.
Yep.
I'm really sure where the placement of it.
And I haven't gone through and done the survey yet with the people. I've just been too busy and stuff, but I, I'm, hopefully I'll get that done this week and I can turn that into it too, so.
And then we can, just, just so everybody's aware of it.
Right.
Where we would do that, so that they understand why we're, why and where.
Right.
I mean, if we just agree that you guys truly open it, ultimately you're done.
Yep.
So we're, we're gonna block Sunnyside too?
Yep. Well, we're current, currently.
Apparently you have requested just.
Yeah.
That's gonna come if they get a petition.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through and do a petition and see how many people want to block. If the majority don't, that's fine. I, I have the mobile speed limit sign in my driveway, the, the digital one and stuff, and just today I caught two people going through, one at forty-four miles an hour, one at forty-eight miles an hour. So, and I mean, I'm literally in my driveway when they do it, you know, doing this and they just, they just drive. They don't care, so.
Yeah, I, I'm only daycare is your neighbor from Sunnyside, and then my other daycare is right by the elementary school.
Yep.
So I drive the detours to Sunnyside.
Correct.
And then back around to the other daycare, so then if you close off the south side of Sunnyside, I'll be driving all the way
up and around and back and around. Yeah, you know the inconvenience then that we would go through as far as first responders getting to a call. It, it, it's quite a drive, you know.
And I think some of your neigh, I think that neighborhood, there's a lot of houses that might be a, a little bit of a battle as to everybody's kind of dispersing for their work in different directions.
Correct.
And.
Yeah, there's a number of people in Sunnyside Street that actually go to County Road fourteen because it's faster to hit the interstate to get into Fargo now than it is to go on Fifty-second Avenue, which is gonna be closed here in a couple days anyways, so.
Right.
But.
Now, one thing I do wanna expand on, the concern from the individual that was in opposition of the culture of this, that was, you know, looking through their response, that was one of their biggest concerns was the impeding fire and rescue vehicles. So that was their concern.
Right. And as far as one of them, I can't remember if it was Bindi's house or not, but I had a medical call one night. I am one of the ones that went around the barricade and drove in the side of the ditch there, so. I know they mentioned that and stuff. That was me, because when we have a medical, I mean, we have a medical, so.
No, like I said, and I talked with Adam about that too.
Yep.
So I mean, I just wanted to make sure you guys were okay here.
Right.
If I had to do.
I'm okay with it, as long as the homeowners are okay with us going through there. Like, like I said, as long as you make them aware of what's going on.
And I think they do okay with that too, because everybody wants to make sure the first responders.
Right. Most of us do have blue lights on our cars, so we usually have something blue blinking, but.
You're denoted anyway.
Correct.
Go through there.
Yep.
Do we have, is there, can we legally shut down a drive, a public road?
Talked to the deputies about this last week and they said that we could.
Yeah, and I've talked to them a couple times myself too, so they, they actually sit in my driveway and run radar and stuff, so.
And I double-checked this to make sure too.
Okay.
Otherwise we wouldn't be going through this exercise right now.
Yeah, understand.
And if you do do it, I highly recommend that you guys contact the fire department, tell Tony and Robs too, so they're aware of what's going on, so.
We'll give a date and then that's, so then everybody will be aware of it. We'll get it around council where Brad knows what's going on.
Biggest thing is like when we're on a call, just that we can open the gate, go to the call. We don't have to stand there and shut the gate again. You know, pull, pull the barricades back over because, you know, if somebody's caught the house that's on fire or whatever, we gotta get there as soon as we can, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
Questions on that?
Yep.
Also, keep in mind there's a storage unit there. I put it in from seventy-six to the storage unit just by default where I always come from where I live. And I got followed into the storage unit and mentioned that, you know, the road is closed or whatever. And I said, how do I get to the storage unit if I, it's not my fault. But, you know, you can understand why.
Sure.
They're frustrated. And I was passed on Brink's Drive also.
Passed on?
Yeah, and I'm driving my big truck. And when I'm driving my big truck, for example, on eighty-one, I can only do about eight, nine miles per hour, but I start grabbing with the suspension so tight. And three, four cars passing in the morning. Two days ago.
Well, we're just driving two miles an hour just to be a nuisance.
Well, well, that's as I do on a big white truck, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm just kidding. Ah, okay.
No, I was riding.
Okay, so you guys wanna do, you wanna explore that option, get a barricade?
It's the will of the residents. They want that barricade to, to reduce the traffic, so.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna hear a number of complaints from people that are using it, but they're not supposed to be using it anyways.
That road was never meant for that kind of traffic.
Correct.
We don't wanna have this.
Yeah, the ground roll there is bad.
And we've been getting actually trucks going down Sunnyside Street, which I've talked, I've talked to Cory. There's been concrete trucks going down there periodically and like delivery trucks going down there. Not, not as many as we've had before, you know, before the sheriff started sitting in my driveway and stuff. So it is cutting down, but when it gets closer to the five o'clock range, they don't wanna go all the way around. They wanna get to, you know, wherever they're going as fast as they can.
At least resistance.
Yep, so.
All right.
Okay.
So why don't you get back to me then next week?
Yep, I'm gonna try and run that.
Where you can, and then we'll get this squared away at the next meeting.
Yep. Yep, sounds good.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Brent. Appreciate it. Anybody else have any other comments you wanna make on Brink?
So are you gonna allow people to go in there through that residence, through the storage unit?
Not from County Road seventeen.
Then how do you get in there?
Get to come around the other side.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's not gonna be on both ends, it's just gonna be on County Road seventeen. So, and we should look at the signage too then and make sure it says on there, you know, not a through.
No, but you put it, you put it just after the, you block it just after that.
Storage?
Storage.
Well, we talked about it being on seventeen. I don't, we can, we can move it down.
You're trying to actually not get them to go down that road at all, so.
You, you typically would.
Just right after that.
Or you block it right at seventeen typically, so they turn around right there on seventeen, because there's more room.
Turn around.
Yeah, and they can't go around it.
They're not, they're turning in a public roadway, not on a.
Or if you put it back, they can drive around it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
In the people's yards.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm just talking right after the, the storage units, and they can turn around in that driveway, the storage.
On the approach off of County seventeen.
But they might end up driving through the signs.
They've done it already.
If you put it on County seventeen, they, there's no way.
We can work.
We will, we will work with our engineer to.
Yeah, we're talking, we're completely covering the road, correct? Three or four blocks, three or four signs that are basically blocking the road.
Then they're moved, they can move it for fire and rescue.
Okay.
Okay. All right, yeah, let's.
I guess the question is, what if somebody is so inclined and they figure out the one is moved, is movable, and they move it, physically drive down it? Is that something that the sheriff then can ticket? If they see that?
I would think so.
Well, I would, I would imagine it's the wording on the sign, right?
That's what I mean, want to put that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is able to go around barricades.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, so.
Yeah.
And warning people before they drive in on the other end is important too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, we'll work on it. We'll get the signage.
So I would just ask, and look, have a motion of it. That would be my request.
Yep.
Since it's been a petition, to have a response by motion.
All right, so I just wanna clarify, because you're, you still have one end open, right?
Right.
And that is going to be on, on seventy-sixth avenue.
Right, yes.
So now you're gonna have people continue to come down, come down, rather than drive through.
We would have to have temporary signage saying, you know, temporary dead end or something like that on that.
Okay.
Is that? Yeah, or we could do a road close.
It's gonna go with this.
Yeah. My recommendation would prefer that you did what you were talking, was if we can get their, if we can get their petition, why don't we block off seventy-sixth? So you can keep going all the way through that, but you, because that's where people are using it, is people cutting off of seventy-sixth. So is that the more apt way to do it?
I think people are cutting through the, the whole thing. They're just using it as a shortcut.
Correct, but what I'm saying is, most of them are going off of seventy-sixth. It's people, honestly, it's people in my developments, people on Sunnyside, it's people on, not Sunnyside, Shadow Lane, those types of areas, memory lane, that are coming through and driving through. So if we're cutting off seventy-sixth and we're only leaving Sunnyside and that open, isn't that the, those are the people who need the access?
Well, if you do a road close, a single sign at seventy-six to warn people the road is closed and then it's barricaded off at seventeen, I think that's what you're, at least some sort of.
I'm saying before, before Sunnyside breaks.
Either way, I believe their, their request's coming from seventeen. A lot of folks go north. They're not going south.
Okay.
And that's probably why they're asking for it at their location. Either location is fine.
I just say staff. A lot of people turning around because they're gonna have a barricade.
Yeah.
They don't know, but you gotta start somewhere, I guess.
Yeah. And we can adjust if we, if it's not working on that location, we could flip it to the other side.
Sure.
And I think it's, you'll get both, because a lot of people, you know, they come through and maybe they don't, aren't familiar and so they go through as far as they can. Well, oh, I can still get through, so I'm gonna go this way, you know? So if that, they'll just keep going until they get cut off and turn around too.
I'm just concerned that if I'm driving down that road and I'm watching my speed and then all of a sudden blocked, and I turn around and I do all this, and I've gotten pissed and I'm gonna boom down the road at forty miles an hour to get out.
Yeah.
That's my only concern.
You're gonna come back though?
What's that?
You gotta go back?
Probably not, but you're gonna get a lot in the beginning, isn't it?
I know, but it's just, you've had a lot in the beginning already, so.
I understand.
We'll get the logistics of that work held tomorrow at the construction meeting, so.
Yep, good.
We'll block off Brink Drive at seventies, at seventeen, but put a road post ahead, sign at seventy-sixth and seventeen.
Okay, so let's get a motion on the table here.
A motion to approve the petition requested by the citizens.
Okay, Dave made a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, on my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your motion passes. Okay, so Jim, you'll get a hold of, take, work on that process?
All right. But we're stating that there's another one potentially coming for Sunnyside.
We'll repeat this process when Brent comes back in again.
Okay.
Fair enough? All right. Okay, on to the next one. Fireworks.
Okay, the next one is, we received an application for the sale of fireworks. What this would be is to, it's from, is it black powder fireworks, Aaron? Yep. And Aaron is in the back applicant. If you had any questions about it, but it'd be to sell fireworks for a very short period of time, coming up before Fourth of July here, going up to that. Right up seven twenty Main Street here in Horace.
Johnson's old.
They have, they did sell fireworks here last year, so they're asking, they're able to get lease worked out to where they can sell again if the fireworks permit was granted.
Aaron, you wanna come up here and introduce yourself, show people in the backyard?
I'm Aaron Stevenson. I will be selling, hopefully, fireworks on seven twenty Main Street in Steve Lewis's building. They're still working on the deal, but.
You got enough time to put this all together?
This fireworks is a really quick thing.
Okay, fair.
We always find people, so yeah.
Okay, no.
Yeah, we'll start probably early, late this week, early next week, and.
Okay. No, that sounds good.
Yep.
We're kinda wondering about that. I know I got some.
We need a better season this year than last year, so.
You'll have all the cool stuff.
I think I saw you there.
You'll have all the cool stuff to sell then.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't need to go down the road.
Okay, anybody got any questions? Get the permit.
It's the twenty-seventh through the fifth is the selling season, if you're curious.
Oh, the application and so forth was reviewed and approved by staff, correct?
We went, I went through it today with Mr. Stevenson.
Okay.
Uh, no issues. They, they did it last, they were selling fireworks to the city last year. Didn't see any issues. I'm unaware of any issues last year with them, so.
So motion approved this permit.
Okay.
Second.
Brent, the motion, you do the second. On my favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Good luck.
Good luck with it.
Thanks, Aaron.
All right, number nine.
Does this is a local business? Can we put a plug on Facebook or something?
We got a page.
Maybe we can share that.
Okay, so first of all, this is my fault, right?
Oh, is this your fault?
What, you put it, having to put this together for?
Well, so this is the presentation that the mayor asked the city put together for the Home Builders Association, and he must have liked it so much, he wanted to hear it himself.
Absolutely.
So we've added some stuff and modified this for this meeting today. This is really just an overview of lot inventory in Horace and some comments about the growth that we're facing going forward. It's pretty basic, it's pretty informative. Can you go there, Sid, Brian? Uh, in the last eighteen years, Horace has grown two hundred and eleven percent. And with its current zoning patterns, if the densities continue to hold the ratios there now, the build-out in Horace is somewhere between ten and fourteen thousand people. Based on current building rates, that would be achieved before twenty forty-five, hence the twenty forty-five comp plan. If you go forward, Brian, you'll see that in the, since the past census, we've really only grown approximately seventeen percent. Uh, now, as, as the, you get closer to the new census, the estimates become worse, um, so it's probably a little bit higher than that, but not too much, the margin of error was eighteen people. So, really, all of the growth that we're looking at is in response to the school. Currently, we have a hundred and seventeen vacant available residential lots in the city, but within our entitlement program, somewhere within it, we have nine hundred and six. Uh, four hundred and ten of these are on track to be available in spring twenty twenty, and go more. All of that is after the school bond. So, the developers are responding to the, you know, responding to the public's vote on the school. Um, if you look at our permit, tracking our residential permits in the past, uh, four years, it's been steady state, more or less so. Forty-seven last year, and we're on track to hit that this year, maybe a little bit more, but. Uh, the number of homes we've permitted so far is in twenty-seven, and it's just new residential standalone homes. Uh, the projection's about fifty for this year, the projection for twenty twenty is one fifty, uh, that has to do primarily with Terry Gardens. Um, we would expect the average value of a house in Horace to decrease significantly, given the types of lots that are being developed next. Uh, most of the lots being developed next, except for one subdivision, our majority are six, residential six, that's ten point nine units an acre. Uh, those are the forty-foot, forty-foot by one hundred lots is the minimum size you can build. Uh, but in reality, most developers don't build up to ten point nine units an acre, they're sitting somewhere between six and nine. When you go to the next slide, one of the things is, when we talk about density, density is just one part of the discussion, when we talk about how do we deal with subdivision flats. Both of these subdivisions here are ten point nine units an acre, and they look very different. Uh, so that, as we go through the comp plan process, we continue to make adjustments to our code, and adjustments to how we engage developers, to make sure that our subdivisions continue to reflect highest and best use. Commercial permits, this doesn't really mean very much, because we don't have a ton of new commercial permits every year. Um, but we would expect to see an increase because of the Vistos Industrial Park, if you go to the next slide. Uh, there's nineteen vacant, course, there's owned lots in Horace, the Vistos Industrial Park, because it's most of those. Um, as we go through the comp plan process, and we begin updating our ordinances, uh, they'll, we'll start moving away from traditional Euclidean commercial zoning, and take more of a centers and corridors approach. This is to maximize flexibility, have more defined standards, it's defined design standards, it's a way to help deliver the public vision that we hear through the comp plan process, which is to, you know, reinforce that small-town feel, and the things that, why people moved to Horace in the first place. The raw land that I would anticipate having this centers and corridors designation is somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred acres. If you go to the next slide, you can kinda see what a centers and corridors designation might produce. Uh, that's Dilworth Town Center, for lack of a better term, that's where a lot of the, the social activity in town Dilworth happens, you know, the main town pub is in there, there's a music venue in there, there's a convenience store in there. That is a reflection of a very advanced centers and corridors code, so continue to make improvements to make sure that, as our commercial land develops, that, uh, everybody benefits, the developer gets the highest and best use, the taxpayer gets the highest and best use, and the city gets something that reflects the public vision. And in addition to that, we continue to make incremental changes, in the parts of town where we can make incremental changes, um, and that's a stand tradition of what Main Street could look like, you know, in a couple of years. Industrial's kind of a black box, because if you ask two city planners what industrial means, you get six answers. Uh, but we have approximately sixty acres zoned either I-one or I-two. Um, it's really hard to calculate how much of this is vacant, because so much of the industrial space in town is temporary or, or supports hobby uses. Um, and many of our light industrial uses do occur on, do and can occur, under commercial zoning ordinances, such as in Rude's Edition, uh, where, um, uh, Councilmember Corstman has his business, for example. So, that's the really quick and dirty run-through of kind of our lot inventory, and I'll, you know, if anybody's any questions, I'll take.
Yeah, I just want to, I think we need to clarify, can you go back to the slide where it said, uh, housing value or crisis, did you say prices, or value decreased significantly?
The value of the new permits.
Correct, so I wanna make sure that we're not stating that existing houses are going to decrease in value, what we're stating is our her, our current average selling price of a house is what, three hundred and nine thousand dollars, is that true?
It's more than that.
More than that, okay. So what we're saying is, we're gonna have more houses that are of a less dollar means.
Correct, they'll be, most of the new houses, either that we're seeing in a permitting system now, where we anticipate seeing, are, are smaller block houses, and so they're, they cost less.
Correct, so, it's not that values of homes are gonna go down, it's that we're gonna have smaller houses being put up to provide a good mix.
No, with all this growth, everybody's value.
Right. That was something that I wanted to make sure everyone understands, that it's like that.
Do you anticipate the number of new home permits to actually accelerate after twenty twenty, because, I mean, if it's going from fifty to one fifty, and you look at there's a backlog of nine hundred and six as of right now, that means it's basically a seven-year backlog.
Well, it is a.
Does that mean it's gonna, you think it's gonna accelerate?
I wouldn't view it as a backlog, I would view it as, that's the potential we have right now, not all of that will be approved. Uh, it, it's, it'd be rare to see all of that approved in any municipality, wherever you are. Planning Commission has not seen most of that number, so, actually, that's, they've seen the four hundred and ten, they've seen half of it, so.
But right now, just having a hundred and seventeen, so that, I mean, that, that basically says we're prepared to handle one year's worth of backlog, right now.
Right.
What is there right now?
Well, I think that's kind of eye-opening, because everybody thinks we have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, so there is a lot in process that's gonna come up.
No, in fact.
But right now, there isn't a, a huge, huge.
If you go to slide four, you kinda see the reality is, it's really been, there's been a lot of prepping for growth, but there hasn't actually been a lot of growth, if you look at those numbers in terms of new houses, so. You know, school.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep, no, thank you again, Matt, that was good, because like I said, it was just stuff that we could present to some of the other.
What was some of the feedback from the Home Builder Association, was there any feedback from them?
Not on this.
Not on this, just information dissemination more than.
Yeah, I was focused on it a lot this time, but. Alright, thank you, Matt, appreciate it, um, Lucas, you're up here.
Uh, yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, the first thing I have is a temporary bonding parameters resolution.
Did you get Casey to give this?
We don't have to put it up there, but, uh, what this resolution does, um, this is in regard to your, uh, temporary financing that you've been working on for, um, improvement District twenty nineteen dash one, twenty nineteen dash two, twenty nineteen dash three, those are the, the street and sewer projects around the new school. Uh, and then improvement District twenty nineteen dash five, which is Vistos Industrial Division, so the city's working on bonding for those projects right now. Um, what this parameters resolution does, is it sets, uh, an amount that the city will bond for, a not-to-exceed amount. Um, so under this resolution, that amount is seventeen point five million dollars, so that says that the city will not, uh, bond for more than that, uh, in this te, original temporary financing round. It also sets, uh, an interest rate that the city will not, uh, go over, that interest rate is at a point five percent. So if it goes over that percent, uh, the city won't go through with, with, uh, the bonding for this. Uh, I talked with Bond Council, and they said, the, uh, interest rate for this is probably closer to three point five percent, so you'll be under, uh, that amount by whatever percent. And then this resolution also sets a pricing committee, which is, uh, comprised of the mayor and the administrator. What the pricing committee does, is once those bonds are, uh, once they're actually sold, then the pricing committee accepts those amounts, so rather than having to, to call a meeting, uh, for the council, you set up, you establish a pricing committee, which is, like I said, the mayor and the administrator.
Is the seventeen million all of those projects, or is there then potential that other projects can be?
That's just a note not to exceed, uh, the city's not actually bonding for that, like, so the city's, uh, in this initial round is bonding for fifteen million, around fifteen million. So what it does is just say that, we won't go over this amount.
Okay, but if there are other projects that get approved, potentially in the next month, uh, there'll be another temporary initial bond?
There'll be, there'll be another one, so what this, the city has had to provide a lot of information for this initial round, because of the, the size of the bonds. Uh, these bonds will be sold nationally, uh, so the city has had to do a lot of groundwork, uh, into these four projects to really explain what they are, um, the growth of the city, the, the largest businesses that are in the city, and really try to paint that picture, um, of this, the city's growth to, let's say, companies in Chicago or New York, bigger companies that don't know who Horace is. Uh, so that's why this, this temporary bond has taken so long, it's the size of it, the size of your city, um, so other projects won't be included with that, they're based on before, that we've already.
But the groundwork that you've laid for future projects and any future temporary bonds will speed that process?
It should.
It should, hopefully, because, I mean, it has taken time to try to compile that information, the cities had to provide it, uh, these guys have all worked really hard on getting that information.
We started this, what, back in February?
Yeah, I, I think March is when I originally gave them numbers, but any projects have gone in, projects have gone out. But, uh, yeah, and then we had to get information on the school, and so they had to provide the information, they had, uh, information from the county, on all the county's growth, um, had been over the last ten years, so there's a lot that, that went into this.
It's almost like a mini comp plan, but they needed to see that, so they understood.
But yeah, it's, my hope is that with, with future ones, that this will help the city, and that we have this information already, we know that when they ask these questions, we can provide it, um, but we haven't really had to do that before, because the bond's been sold regionally. So people know that Horace is growing really fast.
Okay.
And so the banks around here are willing to buy those bonds.
But by going nationally, we're getting better rates, is what you're stating, correct?
The reason that you're going nationally is because of the size.
So, oh, okay.
But yes, hopefully, that's.
It's true.
You'll be better rates as well.
We need to have the credit, and we should be able to be, you know, get approved for hopefully some more interest rates, is what we're hoping.
Well, and that's, Katie thought around three point five.
Yep, so, which is better than four point two five or four point five.
So, so what I need from the council is a motion to approve the parameters resolution.
So, this is fairly standard language, per se, for this kind of temporary bonding. So, where did the seventeen million, five hundred thousand come from, and where, where, what was the magic behind that?
Um, I did not ask, I just asked what the, what the cap was, um, that they went with. I'm sure it's just a percentage of what the, what the total cost of, of the four projects are, and they just add on to it.
Oh, okay, just give.
Same, same with the, the four point five.
So are you anticipating that this is a resolution that we would have to update annually?
This just gets done when you're doing your, your body.
Right, but I, I'm just saying, because we're listing, because we're listing the projects that we've got this year.
Yep.
On the project, you know, on this resolution, well, the idea would be that that they would be closed out by the end of the year, so we're gonna have to redo this resolution each year.
You'll do this resolution for, uh, each time you bond, so you could even do this again this year, if you're gonna be bonding for those, for developments?
But then it's just basically an update to this resolution to add something to the list?
No, I think they're separate.
Separate.
Yeah.
Is it just essentially, like, were they a pretty bow on everything, so when you're, you know, trying to sell the bond, everybody's?
I mean, there's the, there's a lot of other documents too, that they're sending out, that's the one that is the pretty bullet, really explains what's all going on, this is just, uh, the requirement that they have, you need to have this resolution approved by the, the governing body. So, if, if the city does more bonding this year, you'll see one of these again, but it's gonna be specific to that project.
Yep. A motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, give a second.
There's no worry of, like, worst case, the four and a half percent becomes an issue or something, that, you know, something happens if these parameters aren't met.
And that's why you set these parameters at the same, that they won't go over that.
Yeah.
So what we're stating is, if we break these parameters, we have to find another funding method.
Correct.
Yep, basically.
So we're confident in the parameters?
Yeah, they have not given me any reason to be concerned. Because I think what's gonna go on, I think Doherty might, I think they buy the bonds, so the bonding company, and then they sell them.
Oh, they underwrite them, don't they?
Yeah.
That's, yeah. Okay, Dave's got a motion on the floor for temporary bond. Chelsea, a second.
And then if we get a roll call, it's on Mr. Mayor?
Yep, that's what I was gonna do, so a roll call it, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Lucas, you got that one? Who wants to take the next one first, Brian, you wanna hand?
I'll start, I'll start it, and then, uh, tag team it with Lucas here, uh, the letter of credit, this is, uh, important phase of any development, any big, any developments that we have there using special assessments. Layer credit essentially, uh, is assurances or protection for the city on, uh, if there was a default by the property owner, developer, landowner, uh, or builder within a certain time, phase of the project, or, or a lot being developed. A lot of time, what the council has seen recently, is to increase the letter of credit to seventy-five percent of the total project cost. Uh, there are a few developments that are still at fifty, that we're transitioning to seventy-five percent, though. One issue has been brought to our attention is, at what point the layer credit should be required? And then the other part of it is, uh, what we have asked for before was layer credit, uh, before the project bids out, we asked for that layer of credit, or, that way, we're able to tell the, the builders giving that, or developers giving assurances, that the funds are being protected. What has been requested, though, is consideration of having that layer of credit not be based on an estimate, but be based on actual bid amount. So, the layer of credit could either be revised at the time of, or between bid opening and bid award, or flat out, we just require the layer of credit, once we have the bid opening numbers, because we have projects that come in high, and some that come in low. So we're really refining how much would actually be due for layer credit. Uh, what Lucas and I have been discussing, or what we're throwing up, is the idea of having maybe like a preliminary, or like a pre-approval, or a layer of credit flat out approved based on the estimate, and then council's willingness to have that number, or layer of credit be revised, once we have the actual bid numbers. And Lucas could expand on that, I tried to cover just the basics of it.
So, you know, in, in my looking at this from a legal standpoint, the city needs something in place, right away, they need a letter of credit, the city's gonna go through with this process, and, and approve plans and specs, and then advertise, uh, for bids, there needs to be a letter of credit. So right now, your letter of credit requirement is based on the engineer's estimate of, uh, probable construction costs. And that's just saying, here's how much you think this project is gonna cost, now the developer is required to provide a letter of credit, uh, and it's now switched to seventy-five percent of that number. So the proposal would then say, okay, that's how we're gonna start with this, is, there's gonna be a seventy-five percent letter of credit based on the engineer's estimate. Well, then, once the city, uh, actually receives bids, they're gonna be able to determine whether or not the bids came in way lower. If they did, then the city could potentially, uh, work with the developer, and the developer can revise the, uh, letter of credit requirement, to match, or to be a percentage of what the actual bids are, the low bid. Um, and then the developer would have to provide that, revise the letter of credit to the city, before the city would actually advertise, or, uh, accept the bid. But if the developer does not provide the revised letter of credit, before the city awards the bid, the city would use the original letter of credit, which would be the seventy-five percent of the, the engineer's estimate.
So essentially, if the bid comes in high, they're gonna stick with the letter of credit they had, and if it comes in low, then they'll revise it.
And it's up to the developer to get that letter of credit, the city's not gonna do it.
So let me ask a question about, let's say a scenario of, they get the letter of credit ahead, and, you know, all the numbers or whatever, and suddenly, it comes back and it's tremendously higher, and the developer says, I'm not gonna go forward right now with this, and basically pulls the project, because it's just the cost. Who pays for all the work that we've had to do and that kind of stuff, for reviewing plans and specs, all those types of things that we had, is it, our, uh, plat review costs and those types of things are covered throughout the?
Well, your plat review and that stuff is covered with the application fee that they have originally.
Yeah, the application fee.
I don't know if that's covering a lot of your, your legal expenses, or your engineering expenses that are going into this, it's supposed to, but.
I understand, but you're making.
Yeah. And if it, if it goes, if it's too high, or if it's a certain percentage over what the engineer's estimate is, the city doesn't award it anyway. Uh, if it's over, they have to rebid it, if it's over, I think, thirty percent or twenty percent.
What's the reason for having a letter of credit before the bids are done? What, what's our reasoning for having to have it then?
Because by the time you're actually getting the bids and stuff, the city has already started bonding, and, I mean, that process already starts, the city doesn't wanna get stuck with, with doing all that groundwork, legwork, and then all of a sudden, the project doesn't go through, and the city has, has nothing, uh, to hold the developer responsible for anything. So, be, because once, once you're at that point, and you award bids, what's, why is the developer gonna get a letter of credit? Now you've got the, the bid is awarded, there's no letter of credit.
No, I'm talking before we award, award it, I'm asking.
It's, it's a timing thing, it's a timing thing of, you're working on this, and then you have so many days to actually award the bid, is the developer gonna get the letter of credit in time? I don't know, it depends on the developer. Just to have that security in place, so you're not having to advertise for bids, and then just sit and wait for that letter of credit to be provided.
Yeah, but to me, that's the risk that the developer takes, that if he doesn't get his letter of credit in time, he potentially loses out on his bid prices. It seems like a lot of process to get all this, then go for, you know, review, and, and you're also giving them out, that if it goes above, they can stick with the current. that if it goes above, they can stick with the current, um, current price. I'd rather just say it's, you have to have it before we award a bid and it's based on the, the bid dollars, whether it's up or down.
You're saying just moving it further down the process?
Right. We know it's required, we won't, we won't award a bid, we won't award a bid until we have that.
And my concern is timing. It has to be such a push, push, push towards the end and.
But if we're upfront with everybody, it's, it's, it's a check on the checklist. I can't abort a contract unless I have that letter of credit. Develop, we're talking about getting developer agreements done earlier and that kind of stuff. That would be the last piece. Do you guys have any issue getting those things at that amount of time? Dan Depa, Depa, here, can you give any input?
Uh, to your point, once we're, uh, getting, uh, developer to develop for Cup Creek, once it's to that point, it's usually, uh, I suggested even just having like a pre-approval letter so that the, everyone knows that we're leasing track. But this whole thing of going back and forth and getting a, what may be a artificially inflated number by this year because we're seeing such competitive bids, that we can get, have to get a, a letter of credit for four dollars. But really, it's only required to have it for three dollars. But likewise, it was going the other way. So i- i- if, if it gets to that point, um, the developer would know and be able to have it in a short amount of time. It's all this other stuff kind of pre-loading up for, front to, to kind of have it. We're dealing with estimates at this point and it's been a very, as you've seen with your projects, the prices have been all over the board.
Great.
So, uh, typically in, uh, other communities in which we work, um, everything has to be in and advertised for bids. Bids are open, it's gonna be fifty percent or seventy-five percent of that amount. You have, you either have a day or you have a month. It's up to the developer to, to get a letter of credit over. But the understanding is there's no letter of credit, um, there's no award of bid.
So you still get it, you still get the letter of credit and you can get that letter of credit for a short order. Cause by then you've already had a conversation with the banker anyway, but to say, okay, we know the estimate is gonna be in this ballpark. We're just waiting for final estimates to come in and then we can nail it down to say, this is what the bid amounts were. This is where we're probably gonna land. Now I need a letter of credit for that.
Correct. I think all in all, it's much better to work with real numbers, especially when there's lots of commas and zeros involved. So all of a sudden, twenty percent cushion of another ten percent cushion. It gets to be a really big cushion. So I think if, um, if it's all the same, the time from, um, bids are opened, uh, if someone is ready and able to have that from a, from a Thursday opening to a Monday council meeting. I've delivered the letter of credit to the council meeting at a fire talk before to make sure we're heard there. If not, it gets delayed two weeks until the next council meeting.
I mean, that's, that's the point is we don't wanna delay the process, you know, to say, okay. Cause we wanna keep, be able to keep things moving along, but yet give enough time to be able to get that documentation. So it's, it's a chicken and egg kind of situation, right?
Yeah.
And, and I guess that's, that's, if, if we're following a process that's, in general, that's the way other communities handle it, right? If they, if that's the normal procedure is to use the bid amounts for the letter of credit, then why would we be any different? But I mean, are we any, at any undue risk? Are we adding any undue risk by waiting till, I mean, it's still before we award bid. We're not taking on any more risk than what we would have today.
So a couple of points. One, all the cities in this area are not the same, so they all do stuff differently. West Fargo does a promissory note. Uh, I'm not sure what Fargo does. Morehead does a letter of credit. Um, so they're all different. And Horace is different in that you're a smaller community and you're, you're bonding for quite a bit of money. And so you need to protect yourself financially. That's if the letter of credit.
Well, I'm not, I'm not arguing that they not do the letter of credit. I'm just saying the timing of when we give.
And the, the timing thing is big. So for bonding, the bonding agency, the, the underwriters, they request the developer's agreements or the improvement district agreement and the letter of credit. They want to be able to show that, hey, the, the city's backed financially with this, the letter of credit. Well, if you're waiting until bids, to you, before you get a letter of credit, you're not gonna get money for, I don't know how long. The city is taking eight, twelve weeks to get money. But for this last one, I mean, it's even longer than that. So if you're gonna wait that long, that development's gonna be months into construction, the city's not gonna have any money.
Yeah, they're gonna wanna get paid.
Yeah. It, you know what I mean? They, they need to see that the city is backed with something before they're just gonna buy these bonds. And so that's why I say it's, it's a timing thing. And that's why if you have the, the letter of credit right away based on the engineer's estimate, which you get pretty early and then revise it once you get the actual numbers, it's, I mean, that's, that's better than, than how it is now, I guess. But it's, unless you can finance these projects while you wait for the, for the bond proceeds. And it's, I mean, some of these developments I've worked on, it's weeks before the city gets a letter of credit. So yet, I mean, they can be obtained relatively quickly, but are they?
I guess it comes back to are we communicating clearly? This is the point, we want a letter of credit. Are we being inconsistent? That's what I would come back to, I guess. If we're not, then of course I'm gonna be, when do you want it? When do you need it? That type of thing. So if our process is clear and we state at this time, we need a letter of credit and we're stating we're making a potential change to allow an adjustment to that.
Yeah.
Then that's something different, but.
And it's right in the, the improvement district agreement. So when the city's actually financing these improvements, it's, it's in the agreement. And it says, letter of credit in this amount, um, and that's provided during the, the improvement district process.
Yeah, I mean, if it's gonna hold it up, if you're gonna have to wait six, eight weeks for bonding, then.
Yeah, I mean, look at this last one, it's even longer than that.
What are you gonna do?
And that's out of the city's hands. I mean, there's nothing, if you're gonna be bonding for these projects like that.
Well, yeah, we can't.
You have to play by their rules.
Yeah. You can't wait till a, a bid is awarded and then wait another two months.
Well, if we put our, put the dates on it and the timing on it, give it ranges, we can. As long as we're creating the parameters for a contractor to know when the work is expected to start. And if we're saying it starts eight to ten weeks after award of bid because it takes this amount of time to get funding.
And that's, that's my concern. It's a timing thing. I don't want this, this happening to the city.
Contractors will typically start work, they'll start work where, whenever you say this work is to start. That's, if you have an issue with the bonding side or something like that, you say, okay, this is contingent upon the bonding. It's how you write the contract that really dictates how that will move forward. Um, but also they would start at a later date, cause we typically would tell them, a lot of times they wanna start right off when the contracts are signed. But sometimes they don't. They don't hit the floor running right away. And that's just because they may have other work going on or they're getting their materials ordered, things like that. Uh, sometimes it takes a while to get some of the materials on hand before the project starts. Uh, as for the bonding, yes, sometimes it'll take a while. You know, this one that we're working on, it's a fairly good sized bond. It's more robust. Uh, the city didn't have a lot of the information upfront for the bonding requests, like the basics sell the city. So that does take longer. Are we more prepared now for another bond, say later in the year? Yeah, we are. Can we guarantee it's gonna be quicker or not? No, we can't. But we're in a better position because we have that information. Uh, we know that information coming up in the future to where hopefully, I wanna say hopefully, is, uh, we'd be able to answer those questions a lot quicker, based on staffing improvement. You know, actually having more staff that can help answer those questions, get that information available to them right off the bat. But it does take a while, it's right now. So, but we are looking for, you know, getting the council's opinions on when we should have this layer of credit, because it has been up for discussion internally for a while. And we are working on updating when items are due. When are they being processed for developments such as a developer's agreement? We'd like to have that developer's agreement ready and pretty much agreed to at the time of final plat, so you have that just knocked out. Now, if we have a layer of credit required at the same time, we wanna be able to require that upfront. If it's a matter of having one, like a preliminary one, and then have a final one or a preliminary one just after the plat and a final one at the time of the bid. Open to suggestions or open to where the council will wanna go. A lot of.
Well, the, the difference is if there's, you say preliminary, you either have a letter of credit for a certain amount or you don't.
Or you could have like.
There's no such thing from a bank standpoint.
Yeah.
Now, well, we'll kinda cover this amount, you know, you either have it or you don't.
You could get, I believe you could probably get a pre, like a pre-approval saying, are you even qualified to be able to get that? That's the big quip or anything beyond that.
Can we?
Or do you have a statement from the developer?
Right? There is a cost associated with saying, if I need a, the two million dollar letter of credit, this is a one million dollar letter of credit. The cost to get that letter of credit is different.
Yep, you incur more cost.
So therefore, I mean, if, if there's a way that we could say, if at that preliminary stage, if there's a, an ability, does that, is there a cost to get that? You know, we've done the due diligence, the bank has said, there, there, we've done the due diligence and they can be letter of credit up to a certain amount without having to incur that cost.
Yep.
So if I just may use myself as an example, cause I'm aware of some projects that have gone to bid, not awarded, that still don't have a letter of credit and are included in a bonding district. I myself have supplied a letter from the bank saying, tell us what amount, real amount it is. And we'll, then we'll fill in the amount, but it's pre-approved. Or there's a, a letter of credit for X amount of dollars. But it's kind of the chicken and the egg, so we need to have a, a plat really approved. And we have to have an improvement district and we need to know real numbers as to what it's gonna cost. Because yeah, there's a, a, a significant cost to just have an abundance of caution for an extra half million dollar letter of credit.
That's what I'm saying. If there's a, if there's this pre-approval to say, you're pre-approved up to a certain amount, right? And we make that the requirement at the plat approval stage. So we can say, okay, now, now you haven't incurred the cost at that point, but yet you're pretty confident that the bank has said, yes, we can give you this amount, but we really don't know what the real numbers are.
I, I'd equate it kind of to the process that goes through for the plat. We have our preliminary plat and then we have our review. And, and until it's final, final plat approval, right, it's still, it's still a little fluid. We're pretty, pretty sure it's gonna be where it is, but it could, you know, add a lot, for example, or something. Uh, but, uh, you know, so I, I think there just needs to be some, um, things in place from good faith if, uh, between both the developer and the city that we can get there. And to Lucas's point, it's nice to get that process started earlier. Um, but to your point, would you be out any more or less money? Well, you could really, if the bids just came in too high and the whole thing got pulled, then it'd be, I, just like this developer was unable to perform on that letter of credit, the same thing could be there. So I think you probably wanna have some reasonable assurances that the developers financially, where with all, to be able to deliver the letter of credit. Once, for example.
Plat or some, some point when those.
Well, we'd like to have those engineers' estimates there, so that we can kind of have something there. But more importantly, I think it's always going to be different because every year the environment is different. Nature. And even every bid is different. Some are gonna come in smoking low and some are gonna, it's gonna be like, what, were they? This is only for one development, not two, right? So, um, I think it's a matter of tying that together, but having the, the staff have a, a reasonable assurances that they can convey with the developer's agreement and everything else. But basically, we just would like to do the developer agreement for what we need and not for, because we only have another opportunity in six months to revise that amount. So I think it makes sense that we get it to where it's just up or down. But at, at least the letter of credit is for the fifty or seventy-five percent of the actual number, the bid, not just the estimate.
So there is a way to revise the number. The bank does give you the ability to revise the number if it, if it comes in lower?
They could, yeah, yeah, exactly. So that's why.
Will they give you money back if they charge you too much? I don't know. I'm not good at doing it. I don't know how the banks do that.
No, it's just a one-way street. You just give them, yeah.
The bank's fake and.
Right. But then the, as Lucas mentioned, in the developer's agreement that's laid out where, uh, in six months, it can be revised. And then they would, you know, lower down if some of those conditions are met. So let's just say if it was a, you know, a factor of fifty percent or twenty-five percent, that abundance of, abundance of caution would be there until the sixth month and then it could get re, repriced essentially, so.
Well, I guess we're gonna go round and round, so it's probably, we need a, at least at, at some point define that we need an initial. And then, just as you said, give them the flexibility to adjust at final award, once you know the numbers. And we should come back and review it. Six months, once we've gone through it a few times.
So you want a letter of.
Did you, you want some more definition on a motion with this, Lucas? I mean, I mean. I think it would, it would help. Um, currently, the six-month review is within pretty much any developer's agreement that we do. Correct. So that is covered already. It's the, at what level of protection do you want? What information do you want? Do you wanna have that layer of credit upfront? Based on estimate? And then it could be revised based on the actual bid? Would you like to have a layer of credit solely based on the engineer's estimate? And then whatever it bids at, high or low, the developer has to wait until after six months. So the developer agreement to be able to revise anything? Um, or do you wanna have some sort of pre-approval? Or something of that nature from, for the developer, uh, based on estimate? And then you could have a actual letter of credit from, uh, with the numbers based on the bid. So you have a layer of credit based on the bid.
Right.
So.
Pre-approval work for bonding?
Uh, yeah, that's, I don't, just cause you can apply for a certain amount, doesn't mean that you're actually gonna get it. So I don't agree with, with that method.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Just cause you can do it, doesn't mean you're going to do it.
Yeah.
So as a developer, would you rather get, um, your letter of credit and have to end up waiting two months for bonding to go through? Or would you rather get it earlier and then have to?
Well, I'm just curious, for example, I mean, take Cup Creek's, as, as this, well, the difference be, cause the letter of credit is here today. We're gonna hopefully move to advertise for plans or bids and specs. I mean, I just don't know what.
When do we require it right now? What's our process?
Is at the ti- really, it's, there isn't a defined, it's, the layer of credit is.
Basically a checklist item. Have this document, the city will proceed with bonding.
Yep.
The city doesn't have it, they're not gonna go forth and bonding. It's just part of our checklist.
We don't have a defined time.
Where does that checklist, where does that checklist have to be before we move on?
Our plat, right, what you're trying to say.
Well, okay, so, so there's plating and then there's the actual improvement districts. So the city has been, has been doing the plating to ensure there's actually development to do this. And then it starts with the improvement district process. So when we start that improvement district process, we're getting the, a draft of the improvement district agreement to the developers, so they can see, here's what the city has laid out. And then I bring the council, city council, here's the ID agreement we have for this.
But at that point, we still don't have.
Wait, you're wanting to give your blessing to the developer?
Engineering estimates yet at that point?
Yeah.
We do, or we don't?
So that's, we should, we do have them during that process. And that's, once we have those, then I can put them into the agreement. But we need those, those costs, so I can put them in the agreement. So that, to me, is kind of my trigger, is when we have those costs.
Okay, so I know we're getting down into really, really detail, but at that point, we're not even thinking about bonding yet, are we?
We're just starting to. Or we're, we're thinking about bonding well, ahead of time. But we're pulling the triggers once the improvement districts are being established. That's when we're starting to really pull the triggers.
And I mean, you can go pretty quick with these developments, with the improvement districts, if you don't have the resolution and necessity where you're having to publish it in the paper for thirty days. So if you don't have to do that, which for the new developments, you don't, cause you typically get the petition for improvements. It goes pretty quick. And so we're trying to get the, all the resolutions done, check, check, check. Get those numbers for the, the actual cost of the project, then we're sending the agreement. And so, I mean, it's, it's that window of when you're actually doing the improvement district. From the start of the resolution to create the district, we're working on the, the ID agreement for that. And then as soon as we get the numbers, uh, provide them, we review it internally, send it to the developer and then the city council gets to review it.
Then I would guess we do it after you get numbers, after you get, you know, information, that information to the developer. And we do an initial letter of credit at that point. But I think we need to have the, and all, we're all talking about because it goes down. I think we need to have it because it could go up too. And it could go up within five to ten percent and the developer moves forward. We need to adjust that letter of credit as well.
It goes both ways.
Goes both ways. Generally, it's gonna be hopefully down for everybody.
To give you an idea, we've had three different bids happen this year.
Mm-hmm. And they're.
Two came in significantly under, talking one point three million, one point eight million. The third one came in about two hundred thousand over. So it can't go either way. The one that came in over was for a development.
Yep.
So, and that one, have not heard anything on a layer of credit yet for that one. That one likely is gonna be frozen or tabled again. Or if they're, if we're even gonna be able to accept the bids, cause we don't have that.
So I guess mine would be typically. So, I guess mine would be typically a bid process is minimum thirty days, right, Jim?
For holding of the bid?
No, for actually posting and passing it out.
If it's special assessments, four, two publications in fourteen days.
Two publication, fourteen days.
Yeah, it works off to be like eighteen days between the meeting.
So I would say.
But my, my issue with the timeline was, is you can't really do a timeline, cause it's so dependent on, on engineering, it's dependent on developers bonding to you, and so it's actually.
Okay, it's not, it's not, I'm not stating it's a timeline, I'm stating it's a what has been done, so it's a process, and we're looking through the process and where we're at in the process. And so you're talking about the improvement district.
Yeah.
And you're talking about getting ready to prepare bids and do all that kinda stuff, what is the stuff that needs to be done at that point and to the city? So that we can go to the next step, it's a gate, it's a, it's a, it's a stage gate, we can't get through without these things. And to me, it's at the point of the developer, you know, the developer agreement, the final plat, whatever that is, and we got the improvement districts, we got all those things. That's where I, you guys gotta tell us where that actually is, what is that point?
Yeah, and so here, so we'll let, we can walk through with our resolutions, so we have the resolution to create the district. Now we have the resolution directing the engineer to prepare a report, resolution accepting the engineer's report, so at that time, the engineer knows the cost of this project, the preliminary cost. So then he's providing me with that number and I can start on the improvement district agreement. And then it's providing to the developer at that point, providing to the city for the internal review. Um and then it's resolution directing the engineer to prepare plans and specs, and then your resolution to approve plans and specs. Advertise for bits, so it's in that, that period after the, the engineer prepares the reports and we actually have numbers. And then before the, the resolution advertising the bids.
Okay, so to me, it's before advertising the bids, so it's before advertising the bids, we have the initial. And then potentially, we allow after bid acceptance, or bids provided, we can, they can adjust up or down. Does that seem decent?
That's kinda what we were talking about.
Sorry, I went round and round.
Make sure we talk about this, everybody knows what we're trying to do.
It's just, it's basically right now, what, what we're gonna be asking then is, is that they wanna do it where it's an initial and then they can revise it? Or do you wanna keep it where it's how we've been doing it, where it's just the initial based on the, the preliminary numbers and then?
No, I, I, I'm, you know, we're having a good year, but we've seen it go completely the other way, and I wanna guard us both directions.
Well, yeah, I think if we just have the initial estimate and keep it, then the developer, when the bid comes in way lower, they're gonna probably be frustrated.
Right.
So then it just has to go either way, and it doesn't sound like there's any other good way but to have an initial um approval, so I think that's, yeah.
And then give the option at point of bid that can be adjusted again.
Well, is it an option or just?
No, it is, it is, exactly, exactly, sorry, wrong term. It is reviewed and either adjusted, is adjusted if needed at point of acceptance of bids.
Okay, so put that in a motion.
A motion that we require a letter of credit. Prior to award, uh what was your um resolution to bid a project, right?
Well, I, it's either res- before the resolution to advertise for bids, or it's before the resolution approving plans and specs. We typically do those two uh the same night.
Well, if they have to get it, what difference does it make?
What, what I would suggest is just prior to the bid, that way, if you have a situation where you could still move forward of advertising for bid. Contingency, I hate to do contingency on this, but if you say they can do that. We prefer to have it beforehand, but before it can be bid, that layer of credit has to be in the city's hand. That gives some flexibility where you're able to still move forward, but. Uh you, the city has the, hey, we're not going to kick out that bid and requ- advertise it for bid until you do it.
Right.
So it gives some leeway to work around.
Okay, so yeah, I motion that we require our letter of credit, initial letter of credit prior to bid. And allow, not allow, at point of bid review, it is reviewed and adjusted based on actual numbers.
What do you mount, the, the letter of credit amount is reviewed?
Right, the letter of credit amount is reviewed based on the actual dollars. From the bids.
All right.
Second.
We've got a motion on the table, Chelsea got a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, Lucas, so you get that in the books down. Get that squared away. Yeah. All right, Matt, you're up next here.
Maple Lakes Final Plat, Planning Commission recommends approval of Maple Lakes Final Plat. Uh the only non administrative difference between the preliminary and the final plat is we adjusted. Uh the corner lots to be compliant with our ten foot side setback, corner lots. Uh everything else was administrative, uh the developer has begun uh CLOMRF, which is the type of floodplain review required by FEMA for this property. Um that has begun. As our last conversation has suggested, what, what staff will recommend is uh just table the approval of this until the developers agreement. And all the other parts of that are, are hammered out, um the CLOMRF takes approximately forty days anyways. So in terms of um what the timeline looks like from the city's perspective, not much has changed. So if we wait to uh approve this uh final plat, once all the other documents are in place, you know, that's a step towards what we're just talking about, so.
That's stated here that we have public hearing, do we have to? Right?
Mm-hmm, that's just my memo.
Yep, okay, so we'll open it up for public hearing on Maple Lakes Edition, does anybody have any comments or things they wanna say about that? Going once, going twice, okay, now close the public hearing.
Do you need a motion to table it?
That you wanna do is table the rest of this discussion.
Be our recommendation, man, let's be consistent with what we just talked about.
Yeah, so can you state what it would be because of the?
We just wanna see completed developers agreement.
Okay, motion, you table this until we have a completed developers agreement.
Okay, so do you make some motion?
Well, this one has an improvement district agreement, cause the city's gonna be funding this one, so I mean, there's more of a process left.
This is improvement district agreement.
Okay, so we want the improvement district agreement, we'll table it until that happens, is that gonna be okay?
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think we're ready for it anyway.
Your motion?
Yes, I did it as. As noted.
Dave make some motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Brian with a second, making all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we'll have to table that until we get the improvement district together, all right, on to the next one, Matt, you got fifteen two here.
The next one is Hess First Subdivision. Uh Mister and Mrs. Hess are in the audience tonight. Um there's approximately ten acres and they wish to subdivide it into five lots of various sizes. Um this is in the far north east quarter of the city, right up against grade twenty seven and just south of the Fargo city limits. Um this application has uh, there's two steps required here, there's a replat and, or actually a plat, this is unplatted, so a first plat. And a rezone, uh planning commission has recommended approval of this, and there's a list of contingencies that I'll read to you. Um all five lots should be rezoned to R one. Remove, uh upon your approval, the preliminary plat, they'll go and enter discussion with the fire district to ensure that the hammerhead. On that private road can accommodate the turning radius of all frontline fire apparatus. Uh number three is uh the city would like to see an intent to serve letter from CAS rural water users. Number four, the proposed access road is built at a minimum twenty feet wide, number five is streetlights, number six is street trees are added to comply with our street tree ordinance. Um and number seven is that septic system shall have the ability to connect with the urban system when connection is available. So uh there's two components to this, right, one of them is the rezone, and one of them is the approval or denial of the final plat. Of the preliminary plat.
Okay. All right, we'll open up the public hearing on the Hess First Edition, anybody have anything they wanna talk about with that? Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, then we'll close the public hearing, all right. Anybody got any discussion they wanna talk about on this one? Matt, you got anything else you wanna?
The re, are we on the rezone of the preliminary? Preliminary, okay, then not yet.
Okay.
Land and zoning is reviewed, it seems like they provided a pre-specific list.
Yeah, often it's these smaller subdivisions, you, you get, there's often more to do at the front end, just because the subdivider is not a developer, so.
Okay, so you wanna approve the uh first edition, preliminary plat?
So.
All right, I'm not gonna run all of them tonight, yeah.
Brian, okay, we got a second on that one?
I'll second it.
Okay, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, carries. Okay, Hess First Edition of the rezone. Same?
Same, I would like to make a comment about why uh the developer, the subdivider is pursuing R one. Um there's a couple different uh directions that Steph could have advised, advised him to go. Uh having a blanket R one rezone on this, I think helps create a standard for how we handle subdivisions at the corners of the city. Um R one is, is uh the, the most dense zone that we have that can accommodate an acre residential lot. And so what this is, is it kinda sets a fringe standard, so uh things denser than R one and places in the city that ought to not have. You know, more, you know, denser type subdivisions, it creates, you know, a bigger public process for that, whereas we can still support acre lots on the edge of town. So that's why uh it's uh staff advised the subdivider and subdivider moved forward with rezoning the whole thing, R one.
Okay. All right, I'll open up for a public hearing on the First Edition of the rezone, anybody got?
I got a question.
Go.
So is the subject part dedication?
It is, and he's, he's aware and that's, that has to happen, that's why it's not on a condition, cause it has to happen.
Okay, cause I talked to Wade electric today, and we'd probably just take cash and funnel it towards the others facility.
Yeah, I can, I can understand that.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't wanna park, Joe? Yeah, I don't.
If you just reference it, there's no redeveloping, meaning subdivision.
No, this, this came before we initiated those, and I didn't wanna list things that have to happen anyways on the conditions of approval, so.
Okay, so the park board will have to provide a recommendation letter to the planning commission for this.
Okay, anybody else have any comments you wanna make on the public hearing side of this? Okay, all right, I will close the public hearing. All right, um you guys have any questions or comments on this one? Anything else, Matt, that you wanna?
This is basically, this is the existing.
Yeah, so we've updated how we do staff reports, and uh you wanna make sure that you have all the, you know, as much information as we can provide. And it's pretty standard to have, you know, what's existing in terms of zoning and land use and, you know, what it could be or what the application is asking it to be changed to.
So right now, all these are zoned, I recall.
Right now, the whole thing is, yeah. Make a motion to approve the rezone.
Okay, Brian make some motion, please. Chelsea does a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call me tomorrow, Joe, when we'll start the next steps.
Next?
Okay, Lucas, you're up on fifth.
Uh I would recommend that we table it until we get that letter of credit. This is for this call.
Okay.
How long have the bids been out now?
Uh if we wait till the next meeting, it'll be thirty days, so we're right up against our window, so.
I called him today, he said he was gonna call me within a half hour regarding the letter of credit.
As long as he's aware.
And I did, I did text him also a little while ago, and no response.
And I know it was the last week.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we're waiting for stuff and, but it's on the agenda and you're recommending tabling it. Um I guess, I'm not understanding really why it's on the agenda.
I provide the agenda items to make an advance.
We are still waiting for that layer of credit, to give them the most, give them the most amount of time, hey, we're waiting for that item, so if you was to give it to us, then we would have been able to continue. Ideal situation, we wouldn't even put it on there, but for this one, it's down to the wire and. We want, trying to keep it move forward.
Now, I, I'm gonna be here today, I completely understand that and I completely understand trying to be working with. Developers and citizens and all those types of things, but we're trying to put in place a process that we're able to view this information, so. As Chelsea said, she could have reviewed some information, be prepared and that kinda stuff and now we're table, I kinda agree with her. Our date is our date, if it's the Wednesday before meeting, if it's the Tuesday, the Monday, whatever it is, if we can't get those things together. Then we shouldn't put them on the agenda, we gotta get to that point, otherwise, we're always jockeying and we're always trying and we're always doing this. So I'd rather be, this is the day and we're all on that, everyone included ourselves. We put something in Tuesday, you guys should say no, so I think we need to move towards that.
I think most of the time we're there, but there are gonna be some things that come up at the last, and I know.
But why, we have, we have communication, yeah, it seems, it does seem a lot, we have communications and we're trying to put these things in place. Yeah, we, we, I mean, if it was six weeks before we meet again, I can understand that, but we're meeting in two weeks again, so.
Okay.
Uh it's just my feedback on Chelsea, I agree with her, okay.
In the meantime, though, I will uh table this, so we need a motion.
Yeah, I think it just, you get caught off guard a little bit and you don't really know how to handle, I recommend we table this, you know, it's just kind of.
Yep.
So you need a motion to table the topic also?
Okay, Brian makes a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll table it next time. Okay, it's number sixteen, Lucas.
I think Brad's gonna start.
Oh, it'll, it'll be both, um for Cub Creek, we have a variety of different items before you. Uh what, the first item is improvement district agreement, uh this'll probably be the meat and potatoes of the discussion. However, uh the proposed improvement district agreement should be on there. Uh it'd be labeled ID agreement, W S S S T, ID number twenty nineteen dash six. Should be on here. Uh third from the top, here there.
Oh, here.
Yeah. Yeah, right there. Within this ID agreement, uh council did, even after. They approved moving forward with doing a seventy five percent layer of credit, this is one of the developments that was. Uh allowing to be fifty percent layer of credit, the reason why is this development. Uh the logic behind it was this development was already through quite a bit of the process, the plan process. Uh and special assessment development pro- or the process for special assessments. Uh so council did agree to move forward of having a developers agreement reflect fifty percent. The, I met with the developer last week to discuss this developers agreement, and what you do have included in this as proposed. Is a fif- or fifty percent layer of credit, there are the ponds, where there'd be the pond purchase. For Cub Creek, the overall development as a whole, that the city would purchase ponds at one point five million, that was not to be included within the layer of credit calculation. Uh we also met, uh Jim, your engineer and I met with other developers, engineer himself, and to discuss. The actual project cost to make sure the estimate was truly correct, you know, were they comfortable with the numbers in there? Now, when they hashed out the number or they went through those numbers, then the engineer went through and did the. went through and did the standard approach that we have within developer agreements, or any project we do, adding in the contingencies, and then also the project costs that are outside of the actual construction, so you have engineer, legal, admin, a variety of those. That got, once you go through the math, it comes out to eight point, eight point nine two five million for the pond purchase, construction, and that is with the alternate bid of a concrete road, or concrete roads within that development. At minus one point five million, and then fifty percent, it comes out to a layer of credit requirement being three million seven hundred twelve thousand five hundred. Another item within this developer's agreement that is different than previous agreements that we've done, is to have a sunset, so once ninety percent of the lots are developed, the remaining ten percent, the layer of credit requirement will go away. Typically, when you have a development that far along, there, the developers, if they're on to their second, if they have a second addition, they're typically on to their second addition pretty quick after that, or before that point. But there would be a little risk tied to the city, but nowhere near the risk that you have initially upfront. Those lots are still subject to special assessments, if it defaults, if it's past that ten percent, then they would go through the county's process for default payment of special assessments. But those are the differences from when this original developer's agreement was first presented to the city. And like I says, what is being proposed to council for consideration, the developer is here to discuss any items, I know there were some concerns about the letter of credit, and then also, if we have any other, if you, like I said, if you have any other questions or concerns tied to this developer's agreement, we answer those.
Did I miss anything from your side? Okay?
I don't have any.
And I have the agreement, by the time I got the, I'm gonna mail it by November, it was council, this was so kind to, the owner's signature, this is the last document needed on the list, it's for same.
The developer was given a list of projects, this was on the agenda at the last council meeting, but it was tabled because there are a variety of outstanding items, however, the developers worked to get those items accomplished. Some of those were working out agreements with, or Eastmanson Agreement with Caserole Water, Southeast Cass, the city with this, the layer of credit, and also the developer's agreement, so they, my understanding, they've been able to complete those items.
Yes, there's still other items that, that need to be checked off of it before the city can proceed. This agreement is by far the biggest issue, because you're now taking out one point five million dollars from the letter of credit requirement, so just so you're aware, that calculation should be taken out, so the city's risk here is taking a letter of credit in the amount of three million seven hundred twelve thousand five hundred dollars to cover approximately nine million dollar project. That's my concern to you, to protect the city financially, is that letter of credit sufficient for your comfort level? So if you take the eight point nine two five times fifty percent, like you had originally proposed in your first agreement, that letter of credit would be an amount of four million four hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And with this calculation now, with it being taking off the pond lots, that's the number that you get. Another proposal is, if you're taking off the pond lots, so taking off one point five million dollars, taking that amount times seventy-five percent, or times point seven five, and that would be five million five hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. So that seventy-five percent is what you're doing for your new developments.
One thing to keep in mind, too, when council agreed to do the pond purchase, that was not defined of, we, we really didn't define if the layer of credit would be applicable to the ponds or not. I think there were assumptions in both ways, and.
Well, it was included in the, in the amount.
So, it, it's a question of, does the council want to proceed with what is proposed before? Would you like to have modifications done to that? Like I said, developer is available here, there, you know, Lucas did point out that there's that one five, one point five million that is not covered on the layer of credit. When you compare like infrastructure projects, like what we're doing right now, at seventy-six and roundabout, that does not have a layer required, letter of credit requirement, because it's not a development-driven project. So that is the difference between these projects, so you're almost, you can almost say this is like a hybrid, you could look at it that way. Not saying it's a say-all, but you could look at it that way. It implements a vision of what the council wants to do, or has asked for with the ponds, but at the same time, like I said, there's that risk reward, what, what is, what's the sweet spot?
We're taking over ownership of those pond lots anyway.
Yes.
So there, in some regards, there's really no assessment that would, well, there would be assessment related to those.
The assessments, there, those ponds would likely not have assessments on them. The cost for those ponds would be assessed within the improvement district, which is roughly, I mean, it, it hasn't, the improvement district, keep in mind, it could be a smaller area, but the improvement district for that pond purchase, or that area, was about three quarters of that entire section.
Right.
And that three-quarters section is pretty much all the developed land within there, so.
But who is the current owner of that land?
It would be the developer owns. Yeah, just, just a little under half, or a little under half. The Catholic Diocese owns the majority of the remaining portion. My understanding is that land was up for bid, bids were due last week, and so the Catholic Diocese is working with, through a procurement, or a process of potentially selling that land. I don't, I haven't heard any update of if they've shortlisted to developers, or if they've selected one developer in particular, I have not heard anything different. Have you heard anything done, Steve? No. So I, I assume that will be developing over the next couple of weeks, my assumption.
And, and like Brad said, the improvement district boundary is larger than the actual lots or.
Yeah.
Land that's going to get assessed.
Just gonna kind of come down to, you guys are all comfortable with the letter of credit as it stands right now, with the, the total cost of the development that's gonna be taking place here.
Here again, we've, we've been inconsistent with applying the letter of credit, to a lot of many of the developments so far, right? I mean, we, we haven't used a letter, required a letter of credit to many of the developments that are even in process now.
All, all.
They, they are required to do developments. This, this was something done, I believe, was it Prairie View was the first one, or it wa- it wasn't a years ago, but, yeah, the newer one, or the ones over the past couple of years have been.
The only thing that we've done recently is we went from fifty percent to seventy-five percent, that's what we did here one month ago or so, and raised it to that, so the city is more protected.
Yep.
The lots will be our property.
The pond lots would be.
Yes, the pond lots are our property, so if the development fills, those are our, that's our property, no matter what.
Yes.
Whereas, the letter of credit is going towards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
The question is how do you pay for them, because they're gonna be paid for by assessments, not by the city.
Yep.
But it's better over those lots.
Yep.
The whole six acres, a hundred acres, not the ninety acres that we're doing right now.
That's why the assessment district is so large.
Correct. We don't know how much of that's actually going to get benefit, though, I don't know what's.
Yeah.
Trailing, so just because the improvement district boundary is six hundred acres, doesn't mean six hundred acres is getting an assessment.
It is.
Tough situation.
Yeah.
Other thing, thing about do is when the ponds develop, when they actually get constructed, that's right now kind of a open end.
Right. Thoughts, Steve?
Is there, can?
I, I, to me, we've talked about this, this is a, we have a vision of what we're trying to do to promote horus, and where we're trying to go, and this is a, you know, this is something we want to do, there is potential risk, but the statement is, is that, and I don't know the numbers, but I believe you have a significant portion of your current first phase potentially spoken for, and if we're already looking at the Diocese's land as potentially spoken for, you know, we're talking in the next three to four years, that area will be developed. It's the most prime in our city right now for development.
Yeah, I don't think it's fair to just assess Cub Creek.
Correct.
First edition for all the ponds.
Nope.
The only, I mean, if there was some assessment, it should be that percentage of the entire area that's using the pond. That would be the only fair way to do it, if at all. All right, Jeff?
So, get a motion then to approve the district agreement, is that, you guys comfortable on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the district.
I'll second it. I'll second that.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, Dave does a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
All right, amending the engineer, engineers' report.
The next item, I'll introduce this in Jim, or Lucas, so you guys expand it. The engineers' report, when this was first developed, or going through the i- the special assessment process, going through our checklist of the different layers, the engineers' report reflected the project cost to be right around the six and a half million range, is that correct, Jim?
Yep.
As you could tell, the engineers' estimate has been updated, the eight point nine, that's including the pond, so your engineer estimate is right around at seven and a half million dollars, so we're looking for, and Jim can elaborate on the details tied to it, but approving the amended engineers' report for this project, for this.
So we were provided the quantities and the costs based upon the original design by the design engineers, we took those numbers, reviewed and reviewed the quantities, and added the soft costs typically applied to a city project, ten percent for construction for the engineering legal land, as like we talked about earlier, so added the million and a half into there for the land acquisition through the special assessment district. Through further design, the design engineers came back with a much more expensive project cost, and when it gets to be in the millions of dollars range, it's best to come back and have report reviewed and amended by the city. So, I know that the, Steve did an analysis on the original estimate versus the latest one, so if you want to talk about that with us, Steve, or if you want? The short answer is the original estimate didn't include streetlights, didn't include under drains on the side of the gravel subways on the road, earthwork ended up being substantially more than anticipated, a little bit, I think. Yeah, the earth, the site does have, East Third roughly, requires quite a bit of fill to get it up out of floodplains, so there was quite a bit of excavation back there that happened, and like Steve said, there were some other incidental items, so.
It's not, well, it's a bit unexpected, but it required more detailed analysis before. I mean, I mean, it was a further review that basically came up with that.
It was during the plan preparation when they, when it came up, where you have actual, actual numbers versus just kind of laying things out, getting the.
So I guess the follow-on question then is, what are the chances that this could happen again? I mean, it's, we're talking eight point, whatever, million, I mean, is it gonna go up to nine point six, you know, what's?
So I went through all the numbers, and I looked back at the last three or four that we bid, including seventy-six roundabout, Lakeview, seventy-nine, fifty-third, Vistos, and Terragardens, but I went back on Terragardens, and there's a lot of consistency amongst these numbers. There are some that are a little bit higher than what we have seen in the past, and there's some that are a little bit lower, anticipate those balancing out, so, no, I think that this is, from what I've seen, like, I don't think you're gonna see millions of dollars. Right now, the sketch, the plan is to try to construct this all this year, that could potentially raise some of the construction prices, I don't know for sure, but something to think about.
Because of the lack of, lack of availability of the builders of.
Uh, timing.
Build contractors to do the work, and timing.
Timing, I think time would be a lot of, especially if the funds aren't gonna be available.
Right.
Consider all time. If this does get approved tonight and authorized the auditor to advertise for bids, the plan is to open bids on July eleventh with an award on the fifteenth, so those are number of days that are quickly approaching, so.
Okay. Any other discussion, or someone make a motion?
Motion, approve the amended engineer report.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, Dave second.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Declaration of official intent, who's got that one?
Lucas, that's here.
I think we did this one already, David.
I think you tabled, we tabled all items.
There is one you did, hold on.
Did we do that one? Okay.
One of.
We could, John jumped to the D, we could jump to D when that looks up.
Yeah, the plans and specs.
Resolution declaring petition for improvement proceeds.
So we did do it, okay, that was knockoff.
Oh.
You did this fourteen A, was done.
Yeah, I need fourteen B.
So we have been working with the design engineer on reviewing the plan specifications, we've had multiple meetings with them, I reviewed them, they reviewed them, we've gotten comments, sat down with comments to the, to the designers, and everything, we have comments either being addressed or have been addressed, so. I have no concerns with them, in their state.
Okay.
Motion to approve the pond specifications?
Second.
Okay. Brian does a motion, Dave does a second.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Do we need C?
Yep. I'm not sure if they have access to that resolution.
This is a resolution we've done for other developments that you said is a statement we have to do.
Just says that if the, the city uses any money on this, that it will reimburse itself when it gets funding for, for the project.
Same as the previous.
Yep.
Council meeting, so you, we could look at it from last.
Yeah, we did this.
Yeah, if you have it, it's on.
Yeah, looking for it here.
I mean, I took much of all the time.
I do, too.
Same, same.
I mean, it's just.
I'll make a motion for giving the declaration of official intent.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, Dave second.
Second.
Brian does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And the last one then we have is approval directly advertised for bids.
So on this one, I think that there's items that need to be complied with before the city will approve this one, one being there is a, a notice to cease and desist and trespass on the property, the city, or anyone that works for the city is not permitted to enter onto that property, the developer filed that against the city last week, or the week before, so we need that to be rescinded, which has not been done yet. We need a signed improvement district agreement, which you just approved tonight, and then a letter of credit, which you stated tonight that you need the letter of credit before the city will advertise for bids.
But they were able to do that contingent.
Final letter of credit was once the bid opened, so you know what it was, you have draft agreed based on the engineer meeting, I have two hours on Friday, that's three point four, and it came back at three point seven today, so the draft is there, as soon as someone knows what the real number is, or.
And these numbers were changed many times in the previous weeks, so it's not the city that has been changing these numbers.
Well, when I meet with the city on Friday, two hours to discuss what number it's gonna be, and then I'm quarantined, what time do you do, because three thirty?
This was your request, your request to, was to revise this, which I did, and I got it done today. So yes, this was done, this was all provided late, the city has revised this agreement many times between then and now, and we have provided it to the developer as requested, so it's, it's up to the council, there's no letter of credit right now.
Do we have an initial letter of credit, or?
No, because the numbers changed.
I know, but we have an initial for three point four million. I know, but we have an initial for three point four million.
Yeah, so what, what does it matter then if the number's changed? If they're gonna change it anyways?
That is up to the council if you want to accept it or accept that or not. The developer's agreement says the three point seven thing, but the number could change. So it's up to the council if you want to accept it at that different amount.
Because.
So that original one was done when the project cost six million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars at fifty percent. Well, now it's changed, it's now almost, it's eight point nine two five million dollars.
But what do we have as a current letter of credit first time around? What's the amount?
Based on the developer's agreement, it was the three point seven amount. What was, uh, that was a refined amount based on the review from an engineer on the probable costs. Was discussed with the developer, where we left off was at three point four. That number had contingencies in different areas reflected. So my understanding is the developer has a letter of credit for three point four million available. Is that?
So we're gonna email Lucas this afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have a three point four letter, three point four million?
I was in Morehead covering meeting this afternoon, so it was in my office.
Okay.
Which, yeah, day out.
Yep, I understand. But we just put in place a process that we're gonna review.
That actually did already and we still don't have a letter of credit.
Correct, we just went and reviewed one.
And it was tabled again. And then I met with your, the city's engineers on Friday, and you get the number, what it should be. It was a degree that should be around that amount. That amount was emailed over today, and then now we get it, that it's gonna be something different.
That what's gonna be different?
Three point seven, this developer.
We did not know that the city council is going to approve that developer's agreement tonight. This stuff is all up in the air. I didn't know that the city council is going to approve this revision. The city council had approved the fifty percent.
We, and we also in this meeting approved that the, um, letter of credit would be revised after the bid. So it doesn't really matter.
As long, as long as there is a letter of credit protecting the city, I'm fine. Like I said, I wasn't in the office this afternoon.
We're not awarding bids.
Correct.
Yeah, so we can, you know, prove it contingent on those.
Just verifying we have the letter of credit.
Verifying that and then.
Would, do you want to have, the question I would have for you is, do you want to accept that three point four? Or knowing that that dollar amount is going to change? Or do you want to have a revised letter of credit based on what the developer's agreement?
So the question, the question is, do you feel that you can get that mo- letter of credit modified for three point seven?
Once we know, I guess, rather than raising it up to two point seven, it might not be needed. And then in fourteen days.
Wait until.
Yeah.
What was the other piece you said? It was that and what was the one before it?
Uh, signed improvement district agreement, which we get tonight, uh, rescinding the notice to cease and desist and trespass, which would be very helpful to the city.
Yep, after the last state council meeting, we had a cease and desist on, uh, or on the city. So he's asking that that's removed, so.
So I will make a motion approving to advertise for bids, um, pending junk on those three items.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion with three options.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Okay, big guy.
So are you accepting the three four or you?
Yep.
Okay.
We've just put in our process. You're gonna review it once we award bids.
Yep.
We're talking millions of dollars difference. That's something that you're talking three hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so Chelsea put in a motion, Dave put a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, Matt, you got number seventeen here?
Well, with that said and done, we need to do the second reading on the rezon of the extra lot between the preliminary and the final plat. Council saw this last time and, uh, advanced it to the second reading. This was rezoning lot twenty-two in block one to R six.
Russ, anything on that one or?
We looked at it, all right.
You guys already looked at it, it's already, just checking, look here.
Actually, I'm trying to keep you awake.
I'm, I'm not sleeping, I'm, I'm living down there. The, uh, it didn't make sense not to have that lot actually.
I know we talked about it before, I just wanted to make sure.
Motion approved?
Second.
The rezon.
Okay, Brian made a motion, Dave is the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Okay, on eighteen, Rick, you got that one?
Okay, number eighteen, I'll try to be quick on this. Uh, every year we present to the council, uh, employee health insurance coverage. Well, we started that last year to present to council. Uh, the recommendation we had, we did, uh, sit down with Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, myself and Wendy, we sat down with them to review the plans, the coverage. We ran across the same variable we had last year where the difference in plan coverage costs versus, uh, what we have right now wasn't very high or significant. Uh, so we're recommending to keep the plan the same. Uh, also it helps with the employees, it helps make horse marketable. Uh, that is one factor I believe that has helped in being able to recruit and bring employees into the city, has been our insurance. There was an increase, they changed up their age banding structure. Uh, as you may know, health insurance has switched to where they used to do, if you're individual, here's one cost, family, here's another. They had a couple of creative ways of how they did it to where now they do an age banding, so you pay a premium is based on the employee's age or that, or the covered individual's age. They did do some changes there, roughly resulted in about ten percent increase. What was originally told was a three percent. When I ran the pen and paper too, it was just a hair over ten percent increase. Uh, so you would see an increase, and that was applied across the board for all the different plans they had, not just the one we have.
He said it was a three percent?
Yeah, I think they're referring to more like the dental revision because those are so small.
Okay.
But when looking at the healthcare, it was around a ten percent increase.
But last year it was approximately eleven percent?
I believe it was a increase there last year.
It's within line of what it's been.
Yeah. Uh, what I had, what I had been told is other places we're seeing a lot bigger increase than what we are now. Do I believe that? Yes, I do. Um, because you have, you hear of places, or companies all the time facing drastic increases in health insurance. At this time, I'm not seeking council's approval for anything beyond what we currently do for health insur- or for benefits. It'd be health insurance, vision, dental. Uh, we currently do not offer the, like, short-term disability, cancer coverage. And there's a dozen other different options. We're looking into that.
Nothing in the benefits pack, nothing in the benefits package would change?
No, it would, yeah, that's correct. Nothing would change. I could come back to you with that. I'm waiting to get some more numbers because we're shopping that around. We haven't shopped that around before. So we're trying to get some numbers from different companies for that. Uh, the reason you're seeing the health insurance information right now or discussion is because our plan year starts in August, so open enrollment would be July. So this meeting every year is when we would come to you discussing health insurance. As for the overall budgeted line item for insurance and insurance benefits, uh, that would be increased in this next year's budget, just so you're aware. The reason for that increase obviously is because of the increased cost, but also increased amount with employees. We have a few more employees. Uh, coverage types may change every year during open enrollment. If employee has family, they may have their spouse or if they have any children, uh, those dynamics change from time to time. So, uh, that may be influencer of how, if you see that item increase, you'll see it increase some. But the changes in that, that's why you would see a change into the budget. Uh, you'll be seeing the budget probably in July, you'll be seeing a draft coming to council.
So we basically just need a motion to approve.
Looking for approval, just continue with the same plan we have.
Continue or continue the current coverage package from our insurance provider.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wake up, Cory.
Yeah, yeah. Hold on, Russ. Okay, so Brian made a motion, Dave is the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Why are you talking, Russ?
Okay, Brian, you'll probably want to pull up the next one.
That motion passes. All right, so.
Agenda nineteen, uh, and it'll say. Yep, that one right there. Okay, the next item, this is a draft of the agreement. The reason it's a draft is a little different than what we've had before. Uh, a common complaint that we get every summer is mosquitoes. And Horace has often had high trap counts compared to other communities. The rea- one of the reasons why, in talking with, uh, Ben Fraser from Vector Control from the county, has been due to, when we do applications for mosquitoes, we're hitting throughout the city. However, horse is very long and narrow. Mosquitoes go all over and you really have a bigger boundary than what we're spraying. So what this is, is to work with Cas County Vector, be a little more aggressive in that vector control, mainly during the worst times for mosquito breeding, which is really from about now till mid to late July. So what I would ask the county is actually change that July fifteenth to just say end of July, July thirty-first. Uh, the contract is for that part to do additional treatment in the extraterritorial area for up to eight thousand dollars additional. And what they would do is additional treatments, applications, hopefully we'd see a decrease in the amount of mosquitoes we have overall. It, it would be an experiment to see, but to give you a comparison cost-wise, that eight thousand dollars, that would be about the same cost it would be for us to do one aerial spray application. So that's to give you a comparison.
We're gonna need more coverage, we're taking more coverage because we're partnering with Cas County.
It would be a heavier, more aggressive coverage to do that, yes.
Because we need to state that just because we're in Cas County, we already get basic support from Vector. I think it's two years ago, we started this, eleven thousand, six hundred dollars additional. We just stated based on this, and now you're stating we want to put eight thousand above that to get into the extraterritorial area.
To get into the west of town.
Okay.
To get it to where hopefully that cuts down on mountain mosquito, uh, mosquitoes that we have.